Great, thank you. And I'm told that all the other systems are working, the Zoom, Channel 3. There were two or three other things you said too that were on. So we are on and working, correct?
City website.
City website, okay, thanks. So we're good to go. I'm Judy Webb Martin, President of Juana's Club that's holding this today. And for the opportunity to meet our candidate for City Council. We do have three running, the backside for the two-year seat. And the rest of them, the other five are running for, two of them are voting for the four-year seat. So that's why we divided them up that way. The format is going to be, actually I'll let Susan Henderson, she's going to be our moderator today. She can explain to you how the format is going to work and questions that are going to be asked. And we're going to ask each one of them to spend about five minutes talking about themselves and et cetera. So anyway, I'm going to turn it over to Susan Henderson, past president of Juana's. Susan.
Thank you Judy, and thank all of you guys for coming out. We are doing something that has never been done before. So in Sierra Madre this will go down, hopefully well. So we're going to start today with an introduction of the candidates. Starting with from right to left, Ed Garcia. So Ed Garcia for the two-year seat, Dave Loera for the four-year seat, for the two-year seat. And Tracy, Tracy is also for the two-year seat. Next to Tracy on the four-year seat is Kurt Richter. Andy Benkowsky, did I say my name? Okay. Then we have Kelly Crebs, Josephina Riley, and Kelly Crebs, I mean. Crebs, Kelly Crebs and Robert Parker. Now today, our format, we have asked people to submit questions online through email, a special email set up for this event. And also, there've been a couple of people who submitted questions in the park. We will not, when we get to the Q and A, we will not identify who asked the question. It's the content of the question that is important, not who said it. So we're going to start with each candidate introducing themselves. On our minute by minute, we have four minutes actually, not five, we're a little behind schedule, to talk about yourself and let people know who they are. So we're going to start with Ed.
Thank you Susan. Good afternoon, Sierra Madre. My name is Edward Garcia, and I am a candidate, as Susan said, for the two-year seat. I have been living in Sierra Madre for eighteen years. I'm fortunate enough to have married into a family that had been here for a while. So my children, my three children are fourth generations here in Madre. Learned a lot through my in-laws about this town, about the spirit of volunteerism in this town, and what it takes to have the nice things that we have here. A little bit about myself, I have a Bachelor of Science degree in Business Administration with an emphasis in Corporate Finance from University of Southern California Marshall School of Business. I also have a Master of Science in Economics. The Economic Analysis Option is a field of money and banking from Cal Poly Pomona. I currently work as a forensic economist. I could go into that for a long time, but we only have four minutes. But basically I do analyses and I've been qualified as an expert on issues of finance, economics, valuation, and statistics in both Superior Court and in U.S. federal court. So finance is very important to me. I actually teach finance at Cal Poly Pomona, the business school. And I've also taught economics there as well, and I've previously taught at Agusa Pacific University. As far as what I've done here in town, the spirit of volunteerism is super important. So I know for things to work and happen here in town, we need to give our time back to the community. That's very important. I have, I am currently the President of the Sierra Madre Community Foundation, which is a local charity whose sole purpose is to enhance the quality of life of those here in Sierra Madre. I've learned a lot. We work along with the city on a lot of events. We also work along with the schools. And some things that we do that you may have heard of, we're the fiscal receiver for the Fourth of July Committee. So all the monies that come in, that you donate, in order for all those fun things to happen on the third of Fourth of July, come through us, and we disperse those funds. Also, the Mount Wilson Trail Race, we support the children's fund run. We also support the Fletcher Fund, which is a super important fund. That is the trail maintenance fund that volunteers. So the Fletcher Fund pays for all of the equipment and all the needs to keep our trails great for the race. I also have, served on a couple committees. I was on the UUT Oversight Committee, the last one in 2015. Was a member of that committee, appointed by the City Council. I was also on Special Revenue Committee, appointed by the City Council. I was the Chair of that. And that kind of springboarded, we were having a shortfall in the city, almost $2 million revenue deficit to our expenses. So we were tasked with finding ways to, actually it's a revenue committee, so to get the revenue back to where we needed. Also, there were some cuts that happened during that time. And that kind of springboarded me into being the Chair for the Yes on Measure UUT Committee. I don't know if you remember the purple on my sign. I was the Chairman of that committee. We were tasked with educating everybody to make sure that they understood what they were voting for, and it was a very successful campaign with about 73% of the vote. Two years later, I was the Chairman of the No on Measure E Committee. That would have been horrific for our town. It would have forced us into disincorporation. Sorry, I'll try to wrap it up here. I've been the Cub Master of Troop 110, or PAC 110 rather. I'm on the Troop 110 PAC Committee in St. Rita's. I am a member of Christ Church Sierra Madre right across the street here. And things that are important to me are keeping the community spirit, families' safety, right? And also finance. So I will make sure that we have a balanced budget. Well, we have that balanced budget. But I will make sure we have a responsible budget that's balanced with both things that we want here in Sierra Madre, like our own police department, our own fire department, those things that you've said that you want, and balancing it with fiscal responsibility. Make sure that we're spending on the right things and in the right way. Thank you.
My name is Dave Loera. I've lived in Sierra Madre for thirty-five years, always been active in the community. My contributions to the community have been many. I'm the past President of Sierra Madre Juana's Club. I was a reserve police officer here for ten years. Been Commander of the Veterans Reform Ward here post 3300 wait. I've served in the Committee of Congresswoman Judy Chu. And the collaboration between the Veterans Administration, Health System, established the Veterans Health Center in the San Gabriel Valley. Took us over seven years, but we finally opened a clinic in the city of Arcadia. I've also served as Assemblyman Chris Holden's Veteran Advisory Committee. Longtime City of Sierra Madre resident, very aware of issues that are important to the community. I believe a good council member's primary responsibility is to listen to constituents and collect their concerns. Whether it's for my church, country, family, community, my top priority is putting in service to others, and I look forward to representing a great city.
Great. Hi everyone, thank you for coming out today. Ever since, I'm Tracy Brenneman. Ever since I was a child, I knew I wanted to run for office. My mom said that I came out of the womb just dying to make the world a better place. And it wasn't until I moved to Sierra Madre, I found out that this was the place I really wanted to be in person. I fell in love with Sierra Madre. I don't know why I'm getting emotional. I love the small-town charm, I love the community. My motto is preserve and foster, because I want to keep Sierra Madre with its darling small-town charm, but I also want the mom-and-pop shops to be successful. I feel like Main Street is the backbone of our democracy. It's important to me. My career path has taught me many things. The importance of changes, being responsible, communication, and to become solution-oriented. For example, when I heard it was going to be outside in the heat, I brought a little water in case anybody needed it, that kind of thing. I don't complain, I get things done. I'm very well-rounded in the sense that I've been in corporate America, but I also have my own small business and renovating homes. As a kid, my family and I had a donut shop. I was very popular with the neighbors, the neighborhood kids. But it also taught me how much it is hard work to have your own business. We also used to have our own family business, Rock and Roll Pizza in North Hollywood, and we even got a little write-up in People Magazine once, which was kind of fun. One of my proudest achievements has been that I've been a political organizer in 2004 in East Wing State. And that was one of the most phenomenal things I've ever done. I have a BA from Northridge. I'm a licensed California real estate agent. I'm active in the community in the sense of, when I first moved here, I found out about the Civic Club, because every time I went to a festival or a fair, the Civic Club members were always there, and I thought, oh my God, that town did not run about the Civic Club. So I wanted to join. So because I love history so much, I am also Vice Chair of the Archives Department in the Democratic. Now, outside of Sierra Madre, I am part of the Optimist Professional Group. I don't know if you've heard of that, but it's dealing with foster kids at the Optimist Home, at the Pacific Lodge and the Optimist Home. My son goes to Sierra Madre Community Nursery School. He loves it. And my mom, before COVID, loved her senior center, loved, loved, loved working in the seniors, very soon he's her friend. Being on City Council is a labor of love for a town of people who have given to me and my family so much. When I was little, my father would peel the line of beauty, and that taught me a bunch of things. It taught me empathy, honor, integrity, and life is short. If you want to go run for office, you gotta do it. Who knows what's going to happen. Also, you need to enjoy and tell your loving ones to come up to you often. It also taught me sacrifice and service, and I want to be a servant to you, and I would be honored to be your Councilwoman.
Thank you. Just to remind everyone, the reason that we have an election for a vacancy on the four-year seat is because the person who held it, Denise Delmar, unfortunately had to move. So this is for the remainder, the uninspired portion of her term. And whomever is chosen will have to run again in two years. And also, I don't want to be remiss. I don't think we recognize, and you're all former mayor, former Mayor Dawson White is here. And somewhere around here with a little cute umbrella.
Right over there.
Mayor Pro Tem, there she is. Michelle Arias Mendy. And there was someone else here, but, and our City Manager Dave. All right, on to the four-year seats. Starting with Mr. Crebs.
Hello, my name is Kurt Richter. My family first immigrated to Sierra Madre in 1924. And twelve kids, probably eight hundred square foot house on Victoria Lane. So you can imagine the stories that I've told over the years, all the things that, in the history of Sierra Madre. We're now in our fifth generation here in Sierra Madre, and Eric Benkowsky is living here continuously for nineteen years since then. Okay, I moved back to Sierra Madre in the 1960s. And probably, or 1959, and did my elementary school in Yule, Sierra Madre. And I spent my youth, you know, riding my bike, you know, around what are now still very familiar streets. Recognize the houses that I remember then, or the same houses that I walk around town now, to see. The town just really hasn't changed that much. And so all this history, I had uncles who built two to three hundred houses here in town. My grandfather had a bakery, a weaving business where the older boys could work. So if we drive around, my father can show me what driveways he poured back in the early 1940s. So I came then, I came back ten years ago, because this was the place I wanted to raise my children. And we moved back here, I now have ten-year-old friends. And this is where I wanted to be. And so with this history, my love for this town is very, very deep. I'm now happily retired, and I came from an interesting industry, the packaging business. We manufactured packaging materials. We had three large manufacturing plants. And so I started in sales, and then moved into sales management, and then operations management, and then general management. And so I have a long history of putting teams together and solving problems. One of the things in the packaging industry, what you have to do is you have to listen to your customers, and then deliver what they want at the best possible cost. So my vision as a City Councilperson.
Thirty seconds.
We just never want to lose the feel and environment that we have here in town. And, you know, but we need to make sure that the city is developed properly, keeps moving forward. We've got to keep it vibrant downtown. And, you know, I look forward to answering all your questions and getting more in-depth with the real issues here. Thank you.
Good afternoon, everyone. Great to see so many people here who care about Sierra Madre, who appear on the live stream, and those people on the stage with us. My name's Andy Benkowsky. I've been a leader in business, a volunteer, and a problem solver, and I care about people and my community. I manage Century Twenty-One Village right down the street, a downtown small business that's been in Sierra Madre since 1988, that's over thirty-two years. For the last seventeen years, I've trained, managed, and mentored real estate professionals to better serve the community of Sierra Madre and those who want to become part of it. They entrust us with the largest investment they're likely to make in their life. As a business leader and a resident, I've made it my mission to give back and be part of the fabric of the community. I'm on my sixth year serving on the Sierra Madre Union Services Commission, which provides oversight and direction to many city and civic events and programs. I, along with my wife Julie, who's over there, she's a near lifelong resident. We volunteer countless hours with so many groups in the community, including the Fourth of July Committee, the Friends of the Library, the Little League of Club Stats, as I see my son next to her. His first library card was here at the Sierra Madre Public Library, and he started that at Sierra Madre Community Nursery School. My other son, taking my photo over there, went to school, K38, K38 here at the Sierra Madre School. And we care. I have an undergraduate degree in history and a master's in business. Before real estate, I was a public high school teacher. And later, I worked in management for EarthLink, a high-tech company in Pasadena, where I managed budgets of $90 million and had 2,000 employees. As a teacher, I had a budget of zero with thirty-five teenagers. And this November, we're going to be electing three brand-new councilmen. And I'm running because I think we need proven leadership on our council. They have to tackle the problems and steer the ship no matter what comes before. As a city, we're facing the continued COVID-19 pandemic and its impact on our businesses and our residents. Our downtown businesses are an important part of this community. We have to support them and be flexible and creative to help them survive. We also have to make sure that the city services continue to serve the residents, especially our seniors and our youth and other residents that really rely on them. And make sure that our city government continues to be transparent, and our citizens can participate and have their voices heard in the City Council meeting.
Thirty seconds.
That was very fast, Susan. All right, I'll cut, I'll cut, let it go down. Basically, operating a small business and being a volunteer later trained me to be a consensus builder, a problem solver, and understand how to do more with less. So I'm ready to roll up my sleeves, get to work, and make things better for all of us in Sierra Madre, and I hope to earn your confidence and your vote in this election.
Honestly, guys, unless you want to challenge me, I'm looking rather forward to it. All right, next we have Josephina.
Hi, I'm Josephina Riley. First of all, I want to thank our first responders for their heroic efforts, keeping us safe from the Bobcat Fire. We're so grateful. My house is still there. I'm a mom, a wife, and a businesswoman. I currently work as a program manager designing and developing components for electric vehicles. My journey has brought me here today because I want to be directly involved in helping resolve our city's issues. I was born in Buenos Aires, Pasadena, and I immigrated here and moved to Northern California, where I grew up. I studied bioengineering as an undergrad at UC Berkeley, and I got my master's in mechanical engineering at Boston University. I met my husband seven years ago. He was living in the Upper Canyon in Sierra Madre, and he's been here for the last twenty years. Hopefully you guys recognize him. When we first met each other, I was living in Pasadena and working in downtown LA. Needless to say, my first experience with Sierra Madre was driving up the windy road up the canyon, where I kept getting lost. But also, I saw some of the most beautiful green mountain views. I couldn't believe the beauty and calm here in contrast with the concrete jungles of downtown Pasadena and LA. I fell in love with this city. Now that my daughter's almost three, I've had some availability to focus on some of the local issues around my neighborhood. I took the lead in my neighborhood to deal with issues related to crowds and traffic from overflow at Chancery Flat. I volunteered at St. Rita's for some time, but when the opening for City Council came up, I decided that I wanted to step up to help our residents have a voice in City Hall. For me, this is not a political stepping stone, and I don't have a political agenda. I'm just here to listen, understand our residents, and to try to make the best decisions possible for this city now and for our future. I've spent my entire professional career, over fifteen years, leading thousands of teams in different industry areas, bringing people together to resolve issues and lost products. I excel at getting stuff done. My knowledge and experience in teamwork, patient resolution, strong leadership, and a structured, practical, common-sense approach will be what I bring to the City Council. Some of the questions that concern me from the beginning are, for example, why are our water bills so high? Whether the UUT was going to keep climbing? What will the city do but to influx the boats coming over trails and the lack of parking? And how we can live in such a beautiful place, yet have storefronts that remain with poor lease lines for so long? I am just a concerned citizen. These people grow up, go to the school here, and I want her to have the opportunity to grow up in a safe and beautiful, but also affordable and thriving city.
Thirty seconds.
As the previous Vice President of Product, I've had to dive into successful and unsuccessful product lines in order to be agile and learn to pivot. One of the first things I will do when elected is I'm going to create a focus group and dive into the root cause of how to bring in new businesses and how to bring in more customers through existing businesses. I will help drive our residents and businesses to alternative scalable solutions to help our local businesses thrive. I think we have an amazing city and are doing a pretty good job, and we'll build on this as part of continuous improvement. When elected, I vow to understand and be empathetic to our residents. When coming to this meeting, I think the question should always be asked, how does this impact our residents? I will dedicate myself to supporting and protecting the things that make Sierra Madre the charming city that it is, our businesses, our wildlife, our mountains, our community events for you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Is that better? Okay. All right, sorry, so I'll start over. Thanks for the questions and for Susan for moderating. I think sometimes it goes without saying, and some of us on the stage have said, I love this city. I love everything about it. I love raising my family here, and it's the only reason I'm sitting on this stage. I'm not fifth generation, but I'm hoping that our decisions will make my great grandkids, this generation, and they can live in the same wonderful, charming, idyllic town that we love today. On that note, we bought our home eleven years ago, almost eleven years ago. I raised thirteen age sons, both of whom attended public school here in town. My youngest went through the nursery school, and I've spent a lot of time volunteering in nursery school, and also as a captain of volunteer at Sierra Madre Elementary, as well as many, many PKA events. well as many, many PK events, the middle school and the elementary school. But I have to say that probably the most of my volunteer time in town has definitely been devoted to our Little League. We are a hundred and ten percent a Little League baseball family. And, um, you know, I decided that looking around how special that experience was, that it really needed to be involved and make sure that it continues to be the same type of special experience for generations to come. So I joined the board three years ago. Little secret, I don't have kids in Little League right now. So I'm one of those who stayed on the board after my youngest son graduated, partly because we spent the last, part of last year, it was an important renegotiation of our use agreement, yield use agreement with the city and the state and the softball organization. That was really important to me, and so I stayed on. My extended term has now been even more extended, and here we are. On a professional front, I am a corporate lawyer. I've been a lawyer for over twenty years. When I say corporate lawyer, I don't mean that I work for a corporation. I actually work for a private firm. But what I do is I represent instances in those particular decisions, like these deals and transactions, not court and litigation, hopefully not court for my deals. And I primarily, like I said, advise business owners for their most particular decisions, assess the risk, identify solutions, and then it's my job to drive it to satisfactory conclusion, bringing people together to get to a joint competitive outcome. My most pressing priorities for the city is to continue to make smart financial choices. I think those are what lead to everything else that's important to everyone that I've talked to. It leads to us being able to continue to improve our infrastructure, including the water system. And many of you probably noticed the water mains that are, many of them well-passed and used for life, started to be replaced, and that's something we need to continue to do for many years. We will need to make smart financial decisions, and we need to do that. We need to make smart financial decisions to support our businesses. We all want to thrive in downtown. We all want our favorite stores to be successful. And in order to do that, the city needs to be in a position to help, like they did during the downturn and during the shutdown. And we need to be able to continue to do that going forward. It's also important to maintain our enhanced community events that keeps this place so special. It's exactly why we live here, why other people want to live here. And I'm looking to represent the voices of all of Sierra Madre with sensible decision-making and a commitment to our quality of life. Thank you.
Last but not least, I'm going to start.
All right. Good afternoon, everyone. And before I begin, I want to thank the heroes that are protecting us from the pandemic and the wildfires, the nurses, the doctors, grocers, chefs, policemen, firefighters, and many other frontline workers who are helping us today stay safe and healthy. I'd also like to wish my son Ben, happy birthday. He turned sixteen today, so watch out, Sierra Madre, there's going to be a new driver on our screen. I love our vibrant and resilient Puget community, and I'm proud how the community is pulled together during this time of need. I'm running because I'm passionate about taking care of our town and its citizens. In addition to being a husband, father of two teenagers, thirty-year resident of California, and caretaker of a historic Sierra Madre home, I'm a dedicated community servant, working to support and improve Sierra Madre and the San Diego Valley. My dedication to our community is grounded in my experience as a Boy Scout, where I learned the importance of giving back, but I currently serve as San Diego Valley's membership committee chair. I'm also the vice chair of Sierra Madre's Energy, Environment, and Natural Resources Commission, as well as the vice chair of Clean Power Alliance's Community Advisory Committee, the folks who gave us our electricity. And finally, I've taken many Saturdays out on the Mount Wilson Trail, helping to try to repair the town. I have three priorities for this great city: replace our aging infrastructure, strengthen our local economy, and protect our natural resources. On infrastructure, our town has multiple areas to address, from our water pipes to our libraries. Many of our water pipes have nothing to replace in nearly a century. At our current rate, it'll take thirty years to replace them all. If elected, I plan to work with members of the city council to develop a ten-year capital plan, not only replace all our pipes in half that time, but also repair our roads, sewers, and address key structures. For our economy, we have an incredible downtown with fabulous properties that attract not only Sierra Madreans, but people from neighboring communities. It's the heart of the community, and it will continue to be an important part, a place for us to heal from the pandemic. I want to preserve the feel of our small town. However, our commercial code puts too many barriers for small businesses. It can take more than a year to get a permit, driving press, prospective businesses to neighboring communities. And the pandemic is only making the business climate more challenging. So I will support our businesses to weather the pandemic, and I'll work to update our commercial code so it makes it made more reasonable. For natural resources, one of the fabulous things about Sierra Madre is our proximity to the mountains. It means we see a lot of incredible wildlife, including deer, owls, coyotes, bears, and boscots. And I've spent most of my career preserving that environment, including permanent protection of more than forty thousand acres of California forest. Living near the forest means we're at risk of fire. So, so we, in the just recent boscot fire, is now the fourth largest in Los Angeles County, and it's still growing. I'll work closely with state and federal Forest Service and Fish and Wildlife on measures to protect our town from fires and support a healthy habitat for wildlife in our national forests. As we've seen from the recent drought, heat wave, and fires, climate change upon us, we need to decarbonize our energy as quickly as possible, which is why I volunteer in the development of a five-hundred-and-fifty-four kilowatt solar project right here in Sierra Madre. It will come online next year, generate nearly a million kilowatts of clean local renewable energy, and the best part, it'll save the city money in the first year of operation. Sierra Madre is an incredible city, and I am incredibly proud to live here. I'm excited to engage, connect with any of you, and how to improve our city so it continues to flourish. I promise to work hard and serve our community, so please vote for me on November third. Thank you.
Thank you. And I thank everyone for their patience. And so, now, a little birdie just sent me a message. Where's our fire chief? He's here. No, he's here. Where is he? Come on. At least stand in the middle. At least stand in the middle. All right. Now, the bad, the bad news about giving me the mic is that I'm good at personal criticism. And I would like us to take time right now to sing happy birthday to our chief.
Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday to you.
Thank you. And as has been said many, many times, thank the chief and all of our first responders for keeping this town safe always. Thank you. All right, now we're going to go into the Q and A section. And originally, I thought we'd have questions that are generic and some that were specific to candidates. But as it turns out, all of the questions are specific to every candidate, meaning they should be interviewed. Now, the, uh, the criteria for a question being selected is that the question had to be specific to Sierra Madre and the councilmen who are running for the seat. So no questions were selected that were for broader issues. We don't care who you voted for president, we care who you voted for for our city council. The very first, and I won't be calling names because it's an unfair advantage, people who submitted theirs in person don't have their names on it, people on email, I know who you are. So there'll be no names. The first question, and I'm going to ask you to be as brief as possible, and if you can refer to your website on these issues, please make that note for people at home to follow us. And we're going to start where we left off, and go straight across. What issues are most pressing for Sierra Madre residents to understand and deal with?
Thank you very much. Well, so first, you can go to my website, arcurseforsierraamadre2020.org, and see all the details. I think I outlined that in my opening statement. So the three big things for me is improve our infrastructure, keep our economy strong, and protect our natural resources and the environment. So on infrastructure, we really need to focus on our pipes, we need to focus on our libraries, we need to focus on our streets. On our economy, we've got to make sure that we continue to have a thriving downtown. And on the environment, we have to do everything we can to protect our homes from fire. We need to share this precious area of wildlife, and we need to electrify as much as possible with clean, renewable, and local energy sources. Thank you.
In talking to many residents who are in this process, I feel like the two things that would be the most beneficial for a lot of residents, and certainly there are some that you understand, but a lot of residents, I think, would benefit and would actually really appreciate understanding two things. One, a capital improvement project that the city has undertaken with respect to our water and infrastructure. I feel like a lot of residents don't know that that's happening and don't understand the condition that the infrastructure within when this was first implemented. And I think it might go a little bit towards explaining why people feel that the water rates and water bills are so high, if they understood the commitment that's going to be needed to upgrade and improve and replace a system that frankly has been neglected for coming here. And I think the other area in which I think people are not as aware are the city's financial situation. I was actually surprised to learn that in this last budget cycle, there was actually a surplus. Currently, in the almost eleven years I've been here, that hasn't always been the case. As Ed mentioned, there was a sizable deficit not that long ago. So I do think that it would be nice for people to understand how far we've come and how many tries this city has taken to improve the financial situation, because as I said before in my introduction, I think maintaining that financial health is going to underpin everything that we want to do in this town and everything we want to do to serve and make it fit and replace. Thank you.
Hi. So for me, I think it's really important that we're helping businesses of increasing revenue, okay? Sorry. I don't know if the city understands that we have twenty-nine years left in fixing the water pipes, and that's with a one-million-dollar investment, and that money is coming directly from our taxes. Seventy-five percent of the revenue of this city is generated from your pocket, okay? So my focus, and I think it's really important that you guys understand, that we need to find alternate sources of revenue, otherwise the taxes are going to keep increasing to pay for these water infrastructure charges that are going to be constant, okay? So that's really what I want people to understand, that we have such a beautiful downtown, we have everything here and available to us to be able to have a thriving downtown. A lot of our businesses are struggling, obviously, a lot of it is due to COVID, but I think we can, you know, increase our outdoor dining space. I think there's a lot of opportunities that we can take there to really help alleviate the burden on residents' pockets from the must-have water issue. Secondarily, clean energy transportation, this is kind of a secondary issue. I know that a lot of people I spoke with have issues with, as I did up in my town, I mean, up in my house, which is parking and overflowed due to traffic from the trails, okay? We don't really have parking lots in Sierra Madre. Does anyone want to build a parking lot and use our precious, you know, three mile by three mile to build an ugly parking lot? No. Does anyone want to have outdoor seating really right next to a park? Not really. I think what's really important is that we really investigate, you know, a circulator or microtransit or some kind of clean energy solution for public transportation that will be scalable as we bring in more business downtown. I think those are, those are issues that I always point to are very important for people to understand.
Thank you. Andy.
Yeah, I spoke a little bit about the businesses in my opening. We don't make a lot of money on sales tax from the city. That's not a big part of our budget, but I think the businesses downtown do add a lot of quality of life and services to the cities, so I think it's important to help them, but not from a financial standpoint necessarily for the city. We're not going to have a big box store or anything like that that generates serious revenue. Our number-one revenue source is property tax. Everyone that owns a home here understands how, how the prices have increased in Sierra Madre, and it makes it hard for our kids to buy a house here, but it does generate a lot of revenues for the city. One of the big issues that the next council is going to have to deal with is the monastery, right? There's a big development that's being proposed, negotiated, there's a memorandum of understanding right now between the city and the Passionist Fathers, and it's going to have a huge impact on them and the current residents that live around it. And I think it's important that we have some expertise on the council dealing with zoning land,土地管理, and think through some of the decisions that are going to have to be made that could lead to some unintended consequences for us down the road. We want to preserve what we have. We all live in Sierra Madre in spite of its character, and we have to make sure that that character remains intact for our future generations. You know, the development, or quasi-development that's been going on for years, that one carter has been a poor example of how we can deal with these things. It's cost the city a lot of money in lawsuits, and frankly, it's having an abandoned area up there that some of the neighboring residents are unhappy about because of this crime that goes on up there and hanging out up there. Hopefully, it'll teach either one of my kids, but, you know, you know, we want the quality of life to be there, and we don't want to let things go for that long. Infrastructure is definitely important. I won't go over, you know, the water issues, the kind of risks that we've talked about. But it's another issue with kind of kicking the can down the road. Some of you that have been here thirty, forty years, you know, maybe you enjoyed it a little more than you should have, and maybe you should have invested earlier in some of these things, and we wouldn't be in some of the situations we are. The libraries have been the greatest. You know, we have a great library. Like I said, my son's first library card was there, and it's great. We all love it. But we definitely need some support and some change there. We have to make sure it survives in a good way for our kids. And there's opportunities with COVID to reimagine what a library is and how it can be for all of us. And definitely, you know, the city's finances being good stewards of the finances, that is one of the highest responsibilities for the council. We want to make sure that we're getting the best services for our tax dollars and that, you know, they're well-staffed and that we still provide the services of the city to everyone, especially public safety, right? That's the number-one thing. If we saw a fire or any kind of crisis, you know, we really lean on our public safety officials. And we have to make sure that that's provided to all our residents peacefully, respectfully, and we all want to live peacefully, safely, and enjoy the life we expect in Sierra Madre. Those are, I guess, my top three or four.
Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, I think everybody knows what the primary issues that, you know, are ongoing and the city council will be needing to deal with. Obviously, the water. I think the current city council has done an excellent job of prioritizing what needed to be fixed and worked on that and being able to take care of that, you know, out of the budget without having to borrow money like they've done in the past with bonds or so have you. The library, obviously, is a big up-and-coming issue. We've done, of course, there was a lot of surveys done, and it's, I think, pretty obvious that people don't want their property taxes raised to pay for a big library. However, we do need a library that is more modern, and I think we have to understand the changes in today's world. People are working at home, and we can create a library that could be used more by businesses and people who are working, you know, with the technology, possible meeting rooms, and that type of thing, so where maybe some of these things can even be charged for. Also, the monastery project, realization that a development is going to happen there, and so what the city, and I think what they've attempted to do and has done a good job, is taking the opportunity to manage what's, so the city gets the best deal it can out of that development. Because it's going to happen, so, you know, let's take, do the best we can. Another part of the development here in town is, obviously, this town is very old, and there are lots of very old houses. And historically, I've known some developers, and the city has a And historically, I've known some developers, and the city hasn't been famous for, you know, an easy place to develop or redo or refurbish property. So I think what we have to do is really have a strong design plan so that people, when they buy homes in town and want to fix them up, they have a good understanding of what they can and won't do. So because that type of investment is going to be good for the town, you know, and making for nicer neighborhoods. And the other realist thing that we have to come to is what the type of business that we want to draw into Sierra Madre. Obviously, retail has changed. Things aren't all brick and mortar anymore. And so we need to develop them, have businesses come here that will help draw people from neighboring communities because there's, you know, realistically, there's just not enough people in town to support, you know, the restaurants and shops here in town. But if the right type of businesses will come here, this can become, we have such a great environment. You know, this place can be a real draw for people to come and enjoy our town. And of course, we'll have to deal with the parking issues and have a strong plan for that. But that's how we're going to protect our future is by making sure that the right type of development happens here.
Thank you. All right, Nick.
I think the wildfires have been on everyone's mind in the state of D. We've got to work on our environment. I really appreciate the fact that we're starting that solar farm out by the spreading days. I think that's amazing. It's going to take out seven hundred and thirteen, I can't think of the word, my mind went blank. But it's going to take out that much CO2. So that's a big issue. Also, we spend seventy-six thousand dollars a year on trees and planting and cleaning them up and all that kind of thing. So in the past, with the drought, we've had to get rid of a lot of trees. This time, I believe that this year we're starting to actually plant, and I think that's going to help. I definitely want to talk about the small businesses. I mean, that's the number one thing, is keeping them going. I, one of my ideas is, you know, Monrovia has Friday night fairs every Friday night. Now, I'm not saying that that's something that Sierra Madre would want, but at least once a month of a fair where we can support our local businesses and get other people out here to support them as well. Also, cross-promotion. Getting visits, that's one of the things I do as a market coordinator for L'Oreal. I always dig cross-promotions between companies. Where, for example, you know, paint nights. Usually, it's painting and wine drinking. Well, what about a night of, you know, the creative arts group is doing painting and RT Rogers beer is being delivered? They need some love. They've been closed because of COVID, will not close completely to devote orders, but they need some love. That kind of thing, like the Four Seasons Tea Room, maybe a day of a back foot massage with the Lucky Clover people. Whatever, cross-promotions. We've got to keep up with, keep it exciting and breathe this in here. Also, the monastery is a big, big issue. Nothing would have made me happier to know that I could still drive through there and look at that beautiful land with the deer galloping and all that kind of stuff. But obviously, that's not going to, that's not going to happen. And since it has been zoned for institutions, we don't want that either. So we've really got to keep a open communication between the fathers there and the community of the best situation for everyone.
Thank you.
Okay, let us remember, we have a total of eight candidates. There are questions that want to be answered, and these guys are sitting in the comments. Dave Huera, what issues are most pressing for Sierra Madre residents to understand and deal with?
The three that I have identified have been everyone else, the library, Maradona Rosa. And I think we can, one of them that we continue to do is support the police department. Several years ago, the big issue whether we bring the sheriffs in here, and we did not want that. And I'm a very strong believer, and I think most of the citizens are, that we have our own police department. Secondly, with Maradona Rosa, there are several plans going on. There have been attended several of the meetings they've had. That's something else that we have to pay attention to and decide, even though we know they are going to develop there, which is best for the city. Obviously, the fathers there are looking out to support themselves. The library, we have several options. Demolish the old building, refurbish it. And once again, that would represent a tax on the citizen. The library has been, as everyone else has mentioned, something that we've all used. Kids, ragged kids, going up here in Sierra Madre. And as far as the businesses, the best solution is shop Sierra Madre. You can help each of the businesses if you shop here. We can't bring in new business, and if you do not support them, then we will have a debate. Thank you.
Thank you.
And Ed.
Thank you. So the problem with going last is I'll sound a little bit like a broken record here, right? So I apologize.
You're going to be first in a minute.
Oh, great. I will get that. So, yeah, the concerns are what the concerns, your concerns are, right? It's not what my personal concerns are. I want to represent you. And a few candidates have said that. This is us being up here wanting to represent our constituents. It's not what my plans are, what my issues are, really, is what you want. We want to be the voice of that. But yet, speaking into that with our own knowledge and education that we have by knowing things through town. So the three big things that I have heard from talking to individuals here in the city would be infrastructure, especially the water. It was no surprise to me, in 2015, when I was on the special revenue committee, we opened up everything. Looked at all the expenses, and we saw ninety million dollars in deferred maintenance, and we were surprised. Nobody really knew about that except for people within the city. And that is something that needs to be taken care of. And we want to make sure the citizens are aware of how this is being taken care of. We're currently doing a pay-as-you-go plan, right? We're not, we don't have a bond. We're paying as we go. And that's why the water bill is so high. As far as the water is concerned, the fee for the water is relatively small compared to getting the water to your home. So that's an issue. We want to make sure we get the most, the most aggravated pipes fixed first and make sure we continue to do that. We know about Maradona Rosa, people talk about it. We want to make sure that your council is making certain if the MOE, we go forward with the MOE or we have. But if we think about some options, the rezoning option versus keeping it institutional, we want to make sure that we are doing the right thing for the neighbors around the area and for the whole city as a whole. And also, the library, that's a big issue, right? So there was a lot of energy going into it pre-COVID. The, there was a lot of people in town that started a foundation in 2019 in order to support the library and possibly raise funds for a new library. So we want to make sure, when we're on the council, that we are making the best decision on your behalf. We are, we want to make sure that we, you guys understand that utility, the water, is separate from the general fund, right? Those are two different things. You're not paying tax one way and then it's going to the water. The water is its own utility. We want to make sure that you understand that. Our general fund's about twelve million dollars a year. That's about a little bit over a thousand dollars per revenue. I think the current council and city management, they've been doing a great job with that limited amount of money to have all the nice things we have here. Community services are crazy important, so is the downtown area. It's only about three percent of our revenue, the taxes that we get. So that's very small. I don't know, I've dived into these things, right? I'm a columnist, I'm boring. But these are the things that are important to me because they're important to you. These are your hard-earned dollars that are coming to City Hall, and we're making decisions on your behalf. So I want to make sure that we're making the decisions in a rational manner. But like I said, three percent of the revenue is from sales tax. It's a hard road to make that any higher. And it probably would impact our quality of life here. So those are the three issues that I think are important.
Okay. Now, who's here? Next question starts with Ed. But this is a relatively simple question to answer. Okay? What three Sierra Madre commissions or election issues have you been most involved with in the past? I'll repeat that question. What three Sierra Madre commissions or election issues have you most, been most involved with in the past?
So yes, I, in my introduction, I kind of touched on some of these issues. As I said, I was the chairman of the Yes on Measure D Committee. That was the, that was four years ago. And what that did was kept our autonomy here in the town. We were able to have our own police department, and we were able to finance that through bringing the tax back to the level that it was previous. So I've been involved in that. I was running that committee. And then following that, it was the No on Measure D Committee that I was in charge of as well. And many of you residents, and I see face of fear, you supported that. We won by over eighty-two percent. It was an amazing feat. Again, it gave us our autonomy. And I think that's an important question, Susan. I have been making efforts to reach out to individuals on the commissions and committees. I have talked to an individual or two on the planning commission to see what hard work they've been doing and what's important for that commission. Planning commission is obviously very important for our town and what it's going to look like going forward. I've also reached out to the library board of trustees, wanting to know what their opinions are on some of these issues that we're going to have to deal with. Because they're the ones that are doing the hard work and spending hours upon hours in these committees and commissions to then report back to the city council to tell us what they're finding. So I think it's important for me to have a good understanding of those issues.
Thank you.
Huera.
I've not been involved in commissions, but I've been voting. I agree, that can be. The election issues. The, it's all years ago when we had the issue as far as the sheriffs. When the proposal to replace our department, that is one of them that I'm really strongly in favor of. That our police department can stay here. It takes us the quality of life with the tax or the revenue to keep them here. Twelve words spent. The library. Those are going to be in the last couple of years, something we all have to think about.
Well, I'm asking both all three because I watch all three on Zoom. I did apply, I was ready to get on Ener, and I wanted you to go up with the Community Services Commission, but that is when they decided. The city council decided to change it from seven to five.
Would you explain what Ener means or the TBI? Environment, Energy, Resources. Ener.
Yes. Did I say it right? Energy, Environment, Renewable Sources.
All right. That's correct.
Natural, naturally. Naturally. Um, thank you. Wow. Okay. Okay. I think if I lived here during Measure V time, I'd be knocking on everybody. That's an important issue. Yeah, I think that, oh, also, I've been trying to get a hold of, actually, I have been getting a hold of James Carlson with Ener, who has been very good about answering all my questions. Thank you.
Eric.
Yes, I haven't actively been working with the commissions, but the issues that I have followed the closest over the last few years have been the keeping the police and fire local here. I thought that was absolutely essential for us to maintain our small-town feeling and not, you know, not bringing in like the LA County sheriffs. That would have been a bad thing. Also, I've been following very closely the monastery development, knowing that that's going to have such an impact on our neighborhoods, especially on that side of town. So I've been following that very closely, keeping myself up to speed there. Also, I've spent a lot of time talking to business owners here in town and trying to understand what they feel are the weaknesses and the strengths and the things we need to do to really keep a vibrant downtown going here in Sierra Madre.
Andy.
I guess the number one thing I've been involved in, I serve on the Community Services Commission for the last six years. I was chair in seventeen and eighteen. And for those of you that are interested in running that commission, one thing they don't tell you is that you do everything in town. Not everything, but you participate in a lot of events and activities. It's just a bunch of volunteers that put resources on and they hand to our staff. I applaud you for that and everything. So what drove me there is I just have a passion for helping our youth, making sure we have things that they can do to keep themselves occupied in a positive way and also to keep our community, you know, of being a community. So with the Community Services Commission, we definitely put on just about every event here. Second to that would be the library. Actually, the library is something near, close, close and near to my heart. Growing up, I was pretty poor, and I had to rely on our public library as a source for applied space and access to computers and books and things like that. So that's always been near and dear to my heart. While I was on community services, we did have a joint task force with the library board of trustees for a short time when they defined those departments. And that was when the initial conversation started going on with what we wanted to do with our library. I continued to support that. I ran for council two years ago. And I think I campaigned more on behalf of the library than I did for myself. Something I personally learned about. I did volunteer also for the Library Foundation in the initial stages of that. And yeah, that's on hold, but if that comes back up, it's something that we definitely continue to do. One of the other things that I got involved with was the issue that Ed mentioned, the No on Measure D to keep our UDT in place, to keep our financial house in order. I worked hard to educate people on that, and I also raised money to support to that campaign. I thought it was important to do so. Like I said, our fiscal responsibilities are number one for the city. And then also, in my professional life as a realtor, I'm on the board of a charitable foundation that serves all of our local cities. And I always advocate for Sierra Madre's charitable groups to access those resources. I was a serf. I was able to help them apply and get a grant a couple of years ago. And I think one else that's looking for money, I always try to help with that. So I guess that's three or four messages.
Hi. Some of the issues or the election issues that I've been most involved with, obviously, I think people have already mentioned this, I've also been in support of the fire department full-time as well as police department to stay here. I'm so thankful to have them here. We had a lot of issues up near Chantry Flats. I live very close to there, and the police department was invaluable to help us stay safe. But, you know, a personal note, my car got stolen out of my garage in the middle of the day while my husband was home. Okay? So very serious issues happening there. So having the police department, you know, I fully support them. I got to go back to the business. I could talk to a lot of small business owners as well in town and out of town to investigate the rooftops, to see what their perspectives are of the lessened sales and some of the closures. You know, I've heard things like the rent is too high, so, you know, we definitely have to investigate the recause and the recause is. But I do think there is an opportunity to grow. I know that somebody mentioned it's three percent of our revenue. However, in Monrovia, it's, you know, twenty-five percent of their revenue. And I understand, you know, we want to maintain our small-town feel and our distinctive character. We don't want to have a Walmart. Okay, I get that. But, you know, maybe an anchor store or something like that, it can help pull in a little bit more business. I think it would be very valuable for our community. There's also a lot of ideas, you know, thrown around, like outdoor dining areas so that we can enjoy the view. I'm sorry, rooftop, outdoor dining areas so we can enjoy the view. Maybe eliminating some of the parking and creating a little bit more park area down in the pristine court area so that people can walk around more, can enjoy the, you know, the little park in front. And, you know, like I mentioned, I think it has to go hand in hand with some kind of public transportation. So I think those are my thoughts.
Yep. So I have to say that probably the commission I've had the most contact with and interaction with is the with is the community services commission. Certainly, they, staff there have been just a treasure. I think it's an unrecognized treasure in our town, and I really think that they, you know, provide a lot of the behind-the-scenes staffing and hard work that, that, as Andy mentioned, create so many of the events that, that we love. I mean, I, I have the pleasure of working very closely with them, not so much with the staff, on the use of our, our various recreation facilities, making steel, the remaining field at the, at the two schools in town, and just found them to be passionate and, and dedicated and just really wanting to solve problems. So, I, I really think they need to be highlighted and supported, and frankly, I'd love to leverage some of that passion and dedication into finding, you know, greater opportunities for recreation, greater opportunities for our families and our kids to, to be able to enjoy our town. I also was a huge supporter of UUD and, you know, and, and observing it. I think it's the, you know, it's the reason why we are able to maintain our local public safety organizations, our, our police department, our fire department. Without that, right, the new, it would not exist. I mean, it's just the bottom line. So, I, I think, you know, folks who want to maintain that probably also need to understand that, that that's where, that's where it comes from, and they need to be supported with that as well. I think lastly, I would say that in educating myself, I think there's two areas in which I, I've had some outreach. In the planning commission, I really want to understand that process and, and how, how that is interacting with our local property owners, as well as how that will impact with the monastery development and the library. I've spoken with, you know, members of the foundation and wanted to really understand their goals and their process, so we can make sure that we listen to the community, understand what the community wants, what's inside the library, and then try to make it happen.
Thank you.
So, I am the vice chair of the Energy, Environment, and Natural Resources Commission here in, in town, and I'm also your representative to the Clean Power Alliance's Citizen Advisory Committee. That's thirty-two cities, serving more than three million residents and one million accounts. So, those are the main things I'm involved directly in. I'm also engaged in, as I mentioned before, in preparing the trail, and I'm also a, a member of the CIR team, those of you, I'm a cam radio operator, so you guys can hear me Monday nights at, I'm KK6WRI. With the main priorities for the city in the next year, there's three. First is the fire department. We've got to make sure that we continue to fund them. We're going to have to staff them up. We're going to have to make sure that they're there to continue to protect us. They have really been working incredible hours to keep us safe. The second, many people mention it, is the monastery. We're going to have to be working closely with Mayor de Rosa to figure out how is the best way to create that, that, that area, so that we've got open space, and we've got parks, we've got to address traffic, and all of those types. And then, as many other people mentioned, the library. We have the fourth oldest city library in, in Los Angeles County, and our building hasn't been upgraded since nineteen ninety-three. The floors can't hold the weights of the books. We've got to re-roof it. There's a lot of things we have to do. We can make it energy efficient with LED lighting, make, give it access to, to everybody, to get better access. So, those, to me, in this next year, those are going to be three of the, the top things to focus on. Thank you.
Our next question that was committed, and none of these questions came from me. We recently were worried, every single resident was disrespected in Sierra Madre regarding the fires, and they were coming our way and following you there. This next question deals specifically with that, but I want to say that our police, our firefighters, our search, our rescue, all of our first responders and our police staff did a remarkable job and are greatly appreciated. The question is, after the recent wildfire, it makes sense to develop a long-term crisis plan. What review process and preemptive steps would you take to ensure the city is ready for the next wildfire or a natural disaster?
It's a great question. So, you know, we've had two wildfires here in the past, about twelve years. We have areas right behind us right now that haven't burned in close to a century. So, one of the, the real important things is to work with our partners at US Forest Service to, to figure out how we can clear and make that area so that it doesn't end up like what happened on the other end of the mountain, where it was growing at eighteen feet a minute, because that's going to be the, the difference here. If, if we get the Santa Anas and those come down, it's going to be really critical. The second is, we've got to harden our infrastructure. We've got to figure out where can we create sensible space for our homes, so that if that fire starts coming down that mountain, that we've got ways to be able to protect the most valuable investment that everybody has. And so, those are the two biggest things. Really, we're fortunate is that the state has invested unprecedented funds to work on, on fire management. And we've got an MOU with the federal government, hopefully that'll stay, that they're going to put more resources in fighting and, and fighting back the fires in the next decade or so, and I'm going to be out there working with them to make sure that we take care of, of our community. Then finally, on, you know, we just had yesterday, a four-point-five earthquake, and so we need to continue to support and invest in our CIR team and make sure that they educate us, that we've all got bags ready, food, we know how to turn off our, our natural gas, all of the things that are really important for when the big one comes and shakes up. Thank you.
Yep. So, I agree that I think the most important thing is prevention, and I'm glad that the state has, has committed to firefighting, and obviously, they have to, the resources that we need throughout the state are going to be, you know, quite, quite large for the next foreseeable future. I think that, you know, four months of money and time needs to be put into prevention. I think that we need to be talking about how to best defend our, our, our foothills communities. I think that part of that is communication. I think one of the concerns that was addressed during this past incident with the Bobcat Fire was, was communication and flow of information. So, I would like to also, I think, work with the city and make sure that they have the resources that they need to have a comprehensive communication plan during, during a, during an emergency. I think we, we got to the point where I think people felt like, you know, constant flow of information was happening, but it took a little while, and that, and that's great. I'm glad we learned, but I'd like to make sure that we take that learning and apply it to the next situation, so that we can help the gate, provide residents with the kind of information they need, and to the extent that we can, you know, provide information about evacuation plans generically ahead of time, in a kind of non-crisis, I think would be helpful, too, but I think people would be, their fears would be calmed, knowing that there's a plan and knowing what the general plan is, subject to, you know, tweaks for the particular situations.
Hi. Okay, so, I think the very first step when you have a crisis and you have hopefully overcome it, is really to do a retrospective. I do this on all my troubleshooting seminars that I lead. You really got to be honest and look at the history and what was done right and what was not done right, or not, not done well, or could have done better. That, those learnings really give you a feedback loop into how to plan the next time better and more prepared. So, the very first step I would take is a retrospective with the Sierra Madre Fire Department, PD, and other first responders. Then I would come up with a strategic emergency plan or, or, you know, work with the officials to make sure that we can do that. Obviously, that will encompass a prevention plan as well as, you know, what are the measures they're going to take to fight the fires. We definitely need to have a contingency plan put in place as well if the fire does hit. And then the last thing, I think Kelly just mentioned it, I'm also in support of that, is communication is very important with our residents. Okay, so, I think in my opening statement, I said, you know, how does this affect the residents? Well, we need to make sure we have communication on how to be prepared, communication on how to respond during. And so, there's, you know, ideas that I have, for example, maybe some permanent loudspeakers in the areas where it's hard to get up, like the upper canyon, right, those are politically routes. We need to have a plan for, you know, policemen or what have you to drive through the neighborhoods with their loudspeakers like they were doing in this fire. We need to have strong social media. Everyone's pretty much on Facebook, you know, that kind of thing. I think we need to do a really good job of making sure that we lack this kind of communication during, before, and before, and, you know, as part of the retrospective, make sure that we gather, feed back from the residents as well on what's going to happen.
Andy?
Well, we live here in the urban wildlife community area. Next to mom's, we love that, we love the wildlife, but we have to prepare for natural disasters. Obviously, in California, it's getting worse, not better. I think that is the ten largest fires in California, five of them are in this area. So, I think we can all safely expect that to happen again in the future. Number one, like just, you know, thing is communication. I heard a lot of complaints the first few days of the fire, specifically on the lack of communication from the city. I'll say it got great by the end, but that was something I heard. And social media is fine, you know, the, the more, the better, but we should have a more proactive communication plan for the residents, especially the ones closest to the natural areas, where they can know real-time what's happening. Brush abatement's another thing we can do. We can incentivize people to clear the brush around their properties, secure perimeter, kind of like we did with the drought a few, a few years ago, where we offered the incentives for people to take out their lawn and put drought-tolerant type planning. We can do the same thing on the hillside with brush abatement and let people know a safe space away from their property that needs to be maintained to, to lower the risk of fire. Because if we stop the fire before it starts, obviously, we don't have that problem. You know, some of the fires that have been in the news start from human, you know, interactions, throwing things, or, you know, just accidents sometimes, but there are a lot of things we can do to promote and prevent fires from starting in the first place, at least in Sierra Madre. Obviously, we can't control what comes to us. Then our, our zoning and building codes, especially for the homes in the canyon and other hillside areas, when they were built, you know, some of that housing stock is pretty old and, and not built with an eye toward the potential natural disasters. So, when people are looking to retrofit or do some work, you know, there, there's some buildings that will even enact in those areas to, to harden those structures to, to prevent fire or slow the spread if a fire begins. We have an opportunity with the, with the Mayor de Rosa property, with, with the proposal of the hillside area being turned over to the city, that could act as a buffer that we can manage and even be a staging area, maybe for our emergency responders, that we have control over, and we can at least control the spread there, or, or have it as like a sort of staging area for emergency responders to, to fight a fire, and perhaps connect to some of the trails and, and other roads up there that they use to access during fires.
You know, it's getting hot out there, so I'll be very brief, and everybody's been pretty much hitting on all the key issues. The communication part, you know, I learned a lot because I wasn't that familiar with the, and, and I think that's really very, very important. One of the things I do is I, I run a, a foundation that, and my job is I seek out small, local charities and nonprofits that, that I can donate to. So, that's, they're going to be hearing from me, that I think that's an important organization here in town. You know, we just need to educate ourselves on what can be done with this hillside. I know there are some different and creative things. I used to live in Laguna Beach, and we effectively use goats to, to clear this, clear the mountainside and after there was a huge fire down there. So, we just need to understand what all the things that can be done and, and, you know, the beefing up the houses and getting your outfit right, Andy, you know, that, that could be a huge thing, and, and working with the Forest Service, just everything we can do as far as fire breaks and, and that type of thing. So, thank you.
I think everyone kind of touched upon what I was going to say, but a couple of questions though, I did mention that we need to work on our environment, and that the solar farm is something that is going to help take out a lot of tons of CO2, and it's something we have to do. Also, the cleaning of the, of the brush abatement and getting rid of the trees and that kind of thing and planting new trees. I also think it's really important to always keep the communication open between the city, the fire department, and the residents. So, I would love to have some kind of, you know, seminar or something to, to let us all know what we need to do for a brief, that makes sense, because I think communication is the one thing that we really need to, we need to work on that and make sure everyone is, you know, knowing what's happening.
Formosa is communication. I was really surprised this year, I belong to the neighborhood block, block captain, and normally, when we have any incidents in town, we're notified immediately. I was really surprised that during the fires, they did not use that communication system. It would have been very, very helpful, because each block captain has a list of all their members, and we could have notified them. I think next time, if they look at that more closely, and we, we had a drought here, for any incident that happens in Sierra Madre, that we use that. And another thing is possibly instructing the citizens themselves to be more alert, to be prepared, and we've had it here in California as far as the earthquakes. Sometimes we just look at and say, yes, I'll take care of it tomorrow. As everyone mentioned, our fires are more frequent. I've lived here and I've seen three of them thus far. It's come close, thanks to the fire departments and to the wind. We have saved devastation. I think communication is one of the first priorities.
I can't add much more to what's already been said here, but the things we could do is work on the abatement of the brush, we know that, in order to keep the fires out of our residential neighborhoods. But I think one of the most important things is something that we've already been doing and to continue to do, is that we are working with our partner organization, the county, the county fire, fire department, the Angeles National Forest Fire Resources and things of, things of that nature. When we looked at our communications, we saw Captain Snyder giving us very good input and, and information on how the fire was spreading, what's, what's been done, where the can lines are, where the dozer lines are, where the frost jacket's being dropped. That was amazing, and I think we should keep that up. But we saw, we saw Captain Snyder, why? Because Chief Bartlett was that headquartered, right? On our behalf, making sure that we were being looked out for while Engine Forty-One was still here in town, being, being able to make service calls to us in town. So, I think we're doing a great job as far as that's concerned, and we need to continue to have great relationships with our partner organizations for not just fires, but earthquakes or any type of natural.
Thank you. Now, this is the last question, and you have seconds to answer it, okay? But I would encourage you to refer in the time that you have alive, people who are listening, if you are in attendance, take the time to tell them where to go, find out more information about it. So, the question, you may have answered already, but this is what, the last words they're going to hear from you today. Why did you decide to run for city council? You have thirty seconds for that and ten seconds for your email address.
So, as I said, service is very important. I feel a call to community service. I want to serve my neighbors and serve the fellow community. That, that's what it is. I've been encouraged, I'll just state this now, I am endorsed by Mayor Capocha. I am also endorsed by Mayor Pro Tem Rachel Arizmendi, and I am also endorsed by former mayor and current council member Dean Goss. They have encouraged me, each and every one of them, to run for city council, because they know that I have been around and engaged with the city on many facets. The Little League Community Foundation, which touches all kinds of organizations, or even serving on a couple of committees with the city. So, thirty seconds left.
Yeah. It's, it's really a little bit more than thirty seconds, maybe up to four. All right. Okay.
Obviously, I've stated that I've, as long as I've lived here, I've been involved with many community organizations, Juana's Club. community organizations, Kiwanis Club, there's Forum War, St. Rita's, taught, played Little League, all the way to T-Ball, Pony Cult. And when I saw the paper several weeks ago, where we didn't have anyone running, did I have that meter, because I thought, why not? I was really surprised that we did not have many more people volunteering to run for council, that's why.
I kind of let you all know in the beginning how much Sierra Madre needs to me, and I want to be of service to you. It's a labor of love. No one's getting a million dollars for doing. My email is, well, actually, I'm gonna give you my, TracyForCityCouncil.com, easy, TracyForCityCouncil.com. Thank you.
Okay, obviously, I'm gonna refer to my sign, the reason I'm running is with my long history here in town, I love this city, and I have 10-year-old twins, and I want to protect the future of this city. And I have my skill sets of managing and problem-solving, and putting teams together, and being forced to think logically and reasonably, and that's why I think, that's why I'm running for city council. And my website is KurtRichter2020SM.com.
Like I said earlier, I work here in town, I operate a small business, I understand the nature of the business community in town, and volunteer here, serving on the Community Services Commission, that touches probably all of our life. I care about the town and its residents. I think I have the skill set in my experience in volunteer leadership professionally and civically. I have the temperament to be able to bring people together and work out feasible solutions for things. And I think that this is an important election, because we get three brand-new city council people, and we need people that kind of understand these things, have the experience of leadership, that they can jump in and do the job. And that's what I'm here for. My website is AndyTheNumberFourSierraMadre.com, it's also my email address and Gmail, or you can stop into the office, I'm right here at 38 West, anytime, I'm here day and night, and I'm eager to talk to everyone.
I'm not an experienced politician, and I'm new to this political environment. I'm just a concerned citizen, a mom and a business owner who's worked a lot, and I'd like to be better, I want to make a difference, that's why I'm running. I'm not a person that just takes charge, and I want to dive in and be part of the solution. So, when my neighbor texts me and sent me the article, you know, I said, "You know what, I'm gonna do it," and that's why I'm here. I want to be pretty good, but I, you know, incremental improvements, and I think we can do better. And I know I can provide a fresh perspective, really help the city out. Thank you.
So, it's no accident that this place is great, right? people who are in charge of, you know, keeping it, pushing it forward, are strong, committed people who have found in building-making and building and deal execution, that can make both our financial situation maintain a frame, and all of the things that that supports, that we can continue to love it here and for generations to come.
So, service has been part of me for a long, long time. I'm an Eagle Scout, and all of the citizenship badges you have to earn instills in you of giving back to your community, all of the various projects and everything you do. When I was at the State of the City last year, I saw how wonderfully it was managed, and how much time and attention went into it, and how many of the big challenges. And then, I saw that two of the lions of the city council were retiring, John Harabida and John Capocha, and then I looked out and I saw that Dean Goss and Michelle Erzmeni are up for reelection in two years, and they've been on here for eight years. Really need to have a strong line of leadership in the city, to keep what we've built going and build on it and make it stronger. When I saw that, and I saw that we would have 100% turnover, and a potential 100% turnover in two years, that worried me. I love the city, as everyone up here does, and I want to make sure that we've got people out there that have their heart and soul, and put their sweat and tears into making this city great, and keep it great. So, that's why I'm working.
And I want to thank all of the candidates, I want to thank all of the people who attended, and everyone who's watching electronically. It is important in this period of crisis that the things that make Sierra Madre great, which is through participation by the community and our actions, et cetera, that they continue on, so I'm very grateful to all of you today, and Kiwanis, of course, for doing this. Also, by the way, Kiwanis was instrumental in the establishment, in case you didn't know it, of an AM emergency radio station. You can always go to AM 1630, and I believe James Carlson keeps it up to date in the emergency. We learned that after the power outage. You can go sit in your car and turn on the AM radio, or if you had any emergency radio. So, again, I want to thank you all for coming. I encourage you to go to each of the candidates' websites and learn more about them, meet them on the streets, they're just about everywhere, so that you can make an informed decision in November, because as we said before, three of the five county seats, you're going to decide, and that is the future of this great town that we all love. Thank you very much.